Members of the public and other members of staff, if you're getting a reverb or echo in your side, try turning down your speakers. If you're using external speakers, that might help. Or there are other people who haven't muted, so you're hearing feedback from other conversations. So everybody should make sure you're on mute, please.
Hello, everyone. This is Tom Maguire again. It looks like things are starting to come together and planning commissioners will be joining us. And as soon as the president arrives and we make sure we have all of our applicant representatives and everyone from the commission, we will get started. And I apologize again for this technical issue.
Hi, Tom. This is E. I'm here, but I cannot turn on my camera.
Joe, Joe will start to turn on the cameras.
Okay.
It appears that there are some neighbors that are not able to join the meeting. It's kicking them out of teams.
Could you please repeat the cellphone number or the phone number and the code to get back into the recorded meeting, please?
I have from the city from their instructions, if you're unable to connect, please call in at nine seven one two zero three two eight six two. Conference ID is four one seven seven nine four three nine eight pound.
That conference number did not work.
Agnes or someone from the city, can they confirm that conference ID? That is from the instructions on the website.
Yeah, we're confirming that. So just, just one second. This is Agnes with the city. So hang on just one second.
I just tried it and it seemed to work for me.
Abraham may still need to mute his microphone.
I have to mute it?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
You can be heard, yes.
That is the correct code four one seven two nine four zero two five. Excuse me, excuse me, nine one seven two seven four zero two five pound.
If you are still in this meeting, the phone number is the same, nine seven one two zero three two eight six two. The ID is different. It's nine one seven two seven four zero five.
Correct.
I understand we are having technical difficulties. We are now forty-five minutes in. Is there any way we can get this meeting started? Some of us have work and things to do tomorrow.
Agreed. Or reschedule.
Yet again, maybe developer is a little bit scared to have this meeting. I don't know.
Right?
You know, at this point, there's a real concern that these delays and confusions on the login matters prejudice the right of the public to participate in this meeting. I think to make it cleaner, it should be postponed.
I concur.
I concur. This is not going to be.
Second, agreed. Yes, third.
Yep.
And I also agree, there are neighbors that are trying to get into the meeting and can't right now. How many can't get into the meeting right now, you know? This neighbor of mine wants to speak. And he's tried twenty times.
There's a lot of people who have a lot to say. And there you go.
The records show nine presenters and seventy-nine attendees currently.
We've been bushwhacked.
I gotta look up that term, bushwhacked.
All parties probably feel bushwhacked.
In fairness, I feel bad for the presenters as well if they can't figure this out.
It is 2022. There are some of us who've been presenting online for the last two years. They should have it figured out. This is just them messing with us.
Yeah, this is pretty ridiculous. Everybody's been, even if you didn't know how to do it before two years ago, everybody knows how to do it now.
I was just being kind.
I know you are.
I, well, I appreciate the kindness. I think it's very well known that this is a very hot topic and a deep interest to the neighborhood. So maybe the city should have been a bit better prepared to set this meeting up.
Absolutely. We've all been waiting. It's been postponed and now this, so.
Here's what I suggest. There's about, there's a percentage of hands already raised. For those in favor of rescheduling this meeting for another time, I would suggest that we raise our hands and we can get a tally of, you know, opinion of what here. So by raising your hand, you're voting that this meeting should be rescheduled for another time.
Oh, see, 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 see those hands show up now?
It's a tsunami.
Yes, it is. I gotta video this.
I would think that we have, you know, reasonable ground here to just sign off this meeting and it's gonna, it's gonna need to be rescheduled.
With an appropriate amount of time to handle a lot of people.
Hold on, I need to take a, I need to record this.
I mean, there's still plenty of hands not raised, so maybe we should do this more, you know, democratically than just deciding it. I don't know if we need to tally a count or what, but.
If you're new to teams and you're unsure how to raise the hand, look at the top of your screen. There's an image of a hand. Go ahead and click on it.
Yeah, mine, if you go to the three dots and it says more actions, click on the three dots and then if you go up into the to the chart, it will say raise hand and you click it.
It's the fourth dropdown.
So my concern is without someone here from the commission, how are we making a decision that this meeting is going to be canceled? I think that we need their involvement in that. Exactly. That's my point.
Well, no, we're, we're gonna wait, have to wait for someone to come back on. There are nine presenters that have hidden their names for now, so we don't know who's on, but one of them might be listening. We don't know.
There are members of the commission. All of the nine names are, the presenters are on my screen. I'm not sure what you're seeing.
Mine are showing as nine presenters.
Let's just ask them. Tom Maguire, are you in? Because you.
Tom, are you here?
Agnes, Agnes, you keep getting highlighted. Are you, are you? Are you listening? Can somebody give us a?
Yeah. Hi.
We postpone, please.
I'm here. I, the planning commission will have to make a motion, so I'm, I'm, I don't know what's going on behind the scenes with IT. I'm still kind of standing by. So as soon as I know anything, I definitely will let you know.
Thanks, Agnes. But I see the planning commission is listed on here on our screen as present. And, but they're all muted. Is there a way that they can communicate their motion as we have done?
I'm not sure that all of them are here.
Yeah. So how many, how many are there here? We've got.
Hey, so what are you thinking about? What's going on here?
Making a motion to postpone.
Please.
Yeah. So I mean, this idea that people are having that we should cancel the meeting, I mean, that's not something that we can just do. The commission needs to come on and need to have a motion.
Why is the commission muted?
Can the mayor override? Does the mayor have the power to just come in and say, this needs to be postponed?
Tom, can you hear us?
Will everyone please mute their microphone? We're trying to work on the behind the scenes IT stuff. Please mute your microphones.
Okay. Okay. Grounds for, yes, yeah, 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 got it. Okay. I just wanted to check in with you just because.
Teresa, please mute yourself.
Looks like video is working now if you want to show your face. Hey, neighbors.
Hey, Anthony.
Hey, Tony.
Hello, hello.
Hey, Tony.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, so we can see each other and unmute each other. But the rest of the committee has now disappeared.
So, so I just sent a note to Tom asking if he can just unilaterally postpone this. I mean, if we have a motion on the commission that there has to be a quorum of commissioners and they're all muted. So I'm hoping that administratively, they could just say, we push this out and give it more time because we're going to have seventy-five people.
Yeah, it's almost eight o'clock. And let's just say that a third of the people want to share. You know, we're talking about twenty-two to twenty-four, twenty-five people.
Hey, folks. My name is George Brandt. I'm one of the, the planning commissioners. I'm really new. This is like my third meeting, so I don't know what all the procedures are, so I'm, I apologize. I'm with you. So I need to wait for direction from the president of the planning commission, Commissioner Hugh or Tom on how to handle this. So I'm not ignoring you. I'm out of my element here, so I apologize if I can't help.
George, this is John, and I just sent a note to Tom and to President Hugh and to Joe, the IT guy. Oh, no, and to Doreen, asking them to just make a unilateral decision since we're all muted, can't do it. We, if we don't have a quorum, we can't make a motion, right?
That, that's, that I do understand. Yeah, we need to have, we have what, nine on the commission? So we need to have five plus one or something like that?
Yep. Yep.
I'd like to request that we postpone this at least a month. We, we all need time to clear our schedules, so we're not wasting another fifty-six minutes waiting on a team's call that could have been a Zoom call and we would have been off and running by now. So I'd request that we, that we move this at least a month. I need to clear my schedule to make time for things like this.
Hello? Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Looks like we lost Agnes. I just called Doreen on her cellphone and she's gonna talk to Tom and tell him that we've got seventy-five people plus.
I'm here, I'm here. I've been.
There you are. There you are. Awesome.
Working in the back scenes, trying to get things moving. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what to tell you. The IT folks are working, but it's not coming together. I'm also for, I've heard some of the chat, seen some of the chat. I understand we're an hour late. Nothing has happened. I mean, no decision is made, so from that perspective, no one has missed out on anything other than wasting an hour of your time, which I apologize for, but at this point, I don't see that this is going to come together. I'm not getting any encouraging sign from IT. So if the representative of the applicant is here and if the president or vice president of the commission are here and can hear me and can join us.
What if, I mean, do you wanna, yeah, because they need technology.
Yeah, no, I'm.
Thomas is Sam Thomas with the applicant side. We're here.
Okay. This group is asking that we push it out at least a month. They have time to schedule an appropriate amount of time. And with seventy-five-ish people, you know, as, as one lady put it, if a third of them want to testify, we're gonna need more time than they usually.
Um, a point was made earlier that Zoom, Zoom works better with large groups of people. And my office, when we have all office meetings with that large amount of people, we usually do it in Zoom while we use Teams for smaller, smaller projects. So just a suggestion.
All right, our IT department won't let us resume. It's not enough.
So, Planning Commission, we're on recess. We've, we have everyone here. We have, we can continue on off recess and have folks have the presentation, applicant presentation, get into public testimony. We can, if we feel like we need to continue to another time certain, we can do that. I believe the fourteenth is available of March.
Do you need a motion?
Commissioners, if how are you feeling? Are all the planning commissioners present? First of all, can, can, can you all hear and see the presentations at this point? This is Commissioner George Brandt. I can see and hear you. Okay.
Commissioner, I am there. I can hear you. Commissioner Watson can see and hear as well.
Yeah, we can all see. Okay. Do you need a motion to continue to another date?
Uh, yeah, I would need to have that discussion and a motion. Looks like I just lost everybody again.
Just gonna keep it on. It just can't.
Can you hear me? This is Wendy Killington.
Yes, Wendy, I can hear you. There's a lot of, yeah, I can hear you. Now I can't. Am I the only one that seems to be working on these teams tonight?
I can see and hear you. From a discussion point of view, I'm in favor of postponing. If we need to have discussion before a motion, then let's do that. And if the system fails again, can you administratively just say, we have a technical failure and we need to push it out to the fourteen?
Okay, I'd like, sorry, so one thing I would like to hear, I see some hands up. The applicant's representative was trying to get to us, so. Wendy, can you hear me? Ms. Killington, can you hear me?
Okay, now I'm unmuted.
Tom, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, I can.
Okay. All right.
Go ahead, please. We just lost.
Well, this is Commissioner Brandt, if you need a motion to, for a continuance to another date, I would like to put that motion on the table that we postpone this meeting until another date that can be arranged by the city council and the planning commission.
Well, the city council, okay, I just need to clarify, the city council doesn't, isn't involved in this case at this point, they will be after you make your recommendation, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Joe was here, so I was confused, because, so anyway, so I'll, I'll rephrase that, I, I would like to put a motion forward that we postpone this meeting till a time when the planning commission can find a more conducive opportunity.
So, so first of all, I want to see if we have a, still have a quorum, so would those people who are now on the planning commission, would you please disable your camera and mute your, mute your microphone, please?
And lower your hand, please, thank you.
To everybody, please lower your hand, so the planning commission can conduct its business.
I would like to second Rob Rudy's motion to postpone this.
Who is this?
This is Kathleen Noonan.
Are you on the planning commission?
No.
Then please mute your microphone and wait for your turn, please. We still have Dolly, no, we still have Stephen Perry. Would you please lower your hand? Thank you. So.
So, President Hu, we have, I count seven planning commissioners, so you have a quorum.
You're on mute. You can't be heard, you're on mute.
All right, thank you. So, Commissioner Brandt has put forward a motion to postpone the hearing to a day certain, and are we looking at March fourteenth?
President Hu, can I ask a quick question?
Sure, please go ahead, Commissioner K. Seven.
Do we need to decide the date now, or should we leave it in Tom and their capable hands to decide?
No, just a day certain, Tom?
We need it, we need, we need a date certain, please, yes.
Yeah, we do need a date.
Okay.
Well, March four, Commissioner Brandt, would you like to make a motion to the fourteenth, or is that good, is that good for you?
I'll, I'll make a motion for the fourteenth, since I'm hearing that that's the date that's available. My motion is to postpone this meeting to March fourteenth to give IT and the community time to regroup.
All right, so do we have a second?
Case seven, second.
Commissioner K. Seven, all those, all those in favor, raise your hand, please. Rob Rudy, would you please lower your hand? You are not a commission member. And Clint Welton, please do not raise your hand if you're not a planning commission, thank you.
Does the community get a choice of when the date is rescheduled for? This is not enough time for all of us to reschedule and make this meeting.
You may submit your request to the, to Agnes, but in the meantime, the planning commission will decide.
For the record, I did not raise my hand, I got moved to the presenter.
All right, so those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have President Hu, Commissioner Brandt, Vice President Jackson, Commissioner Robert, Commissioner Miranda, Commissioner Shook, and Commissioner Watson. The motion passed unanimously, so the meeting, the here public meeting will be postponed until March fourteenth.
President Hu?
Yes.
I know you just took a vote, but I didn't have a chance to get that in with the discussion, another option was, you could, you could have, you could open the hearing, you could have the staff presentation and the applicant presentation. And then we could come back on the fourteenth for public testimony, that's another option.
I will, rather wait until we have this IT messel figure out and just do them all together.
Understood.
All right, so, sorry to the public that, for this IT mishap, this is the first time that we had, we are doing this on teams with, you know, presenters and attendees, so I read some of the comments, I heard some of the comments, and there's no way to derail the hearing in any way, it's an honest mistake as far as I could tell, so thank you for your patience. And we'll move on to our, so I'm going to close the hearing at this time until March fourteenth.
Why, I wanna, why can't we have a participation in when the meeting's rescheduled? We have all taken time out of our schedules for this evening, and now you just, out of the blue, pick a date, two weeks from today. Doesn't the community have the ability to also participate in picking a day? We need to schedule based on.
Did we lose her?
I don't know. So this is a planning commission meeting, so this is, so the public has time to speak when it's, when we invite them to speak, we did not invite her to speak, so let's move on to the next topic, other business.
I don't have any other business tonight. We, you voted to continue the hearing time certain, seven o'clock on March fourteenth. We will fix the technical issues between now and then. And I'm sorry to the commission, I'm sorry to the applicant and their team, staff and the public for this wasting of your time and this not working out, but we will get this fixed and we will be back.
Okay.
To the planning commission, will they, where there'll be a new flyer sent out to all the neighbors, because this, it, you know, we really have all rallied behind this and there's, you can see there's eighty-some plus people. So it would be nice to make sure that everyone's getting mailed out, all this information sent accordingly.
We will make sure that the meeting is, the, the same email list will be notified, yes.
Will all surrounding within five hundred feet, all the neighbors be notified as well?
Nope. That's not a requirement at this point. But everyone who's been writing in and following the progress of the hearings, schedules will be notified.
Okay, with that, I, the meeting is adjourned, see you on March fourteen, thank you.